All right, good evening, everyone. This is the Board of Selectmen's meeting for February 7th, 2017. The first item on our agenda, let me start by saying that our, David Burns, one of our members, is out sick unfortunately tonight, just that time of year and the flu seems to be going around, so we wish David a speedy recovery and hope he feels better soon. So it's just Tom and me tonight, along with Mike Dennehy, Town Administrator, and Emily Martin. First item on our agenda is to review and approve meeting minutes.
I move approval of the meeting minutes for November 21st, 2016, November 29th, 2016, and November 6th, 2016, as written.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Future meeting dates, February 21st, March 7th, and March 21st.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
We are due to meet with the Warren Committee on the 15th, so we're going to post that in case two or three of us are able to go to that meeting.
Yep.
All right, do we have anyone tonight for citizen speak? Mr. Joe Henning.
Hi.
Good evening.
I'm Bill Joe Henning, 23 Parkwood Drive. I'm increasingly concerned about the idea that there would be an override and whether there would be justification for such an override. And I've been looking at the school budget because it represents about half of the town budget. And I've been looking at the amount of administration, which means non-teaching positions. And I find that about 27 percent of the budget, of the salary budget, is made up of non-teaching positions. And I wonder how critical they are. Like, I wonder if the Board of Selectmen or the Warren Committee should do a little digging into these non-teaching positions, principals, vice principals, et cetera, who are extremely costly, assistant superintendents. It seems like a layer upon layer of bureaucracy that I'm not sure is warranted or justified. And I would like to suggest that perhaps the Warren Committee and the Board of Selectmen and the school committee should think about the idea that maybe there should be a haircut given to non-teaching positions. And that maybe the goal should be to go from 27 percent to 20, or from 27 to 22 percent of the total salary budget. Because I think that the money could be better used in providing free sports programs for people, for kids in the schools, so that their parents don't have to pay for it. And free transportation to get to school, so their parents don't have to pay for it. You know, I've been to meetings before where, you know, prior to elections, where school committee members will get up and talk. And I make a comment and people say, "Well, you don't have any kids in school." And it's true, I've never been to a public school. But I can frankly say, the whole goal is to provide education to children. And I think that education is the name of the game. And maybe there would be some question about that, but I did receive an education. I did go to college and I did go to graduate school. I was able to qualify to go to an Ivy League school. So I did receive an education, I guess, I'll assume that. And so I went to Catholic school and there was no bureaucracy at all. There was no principal. The eighth grade teacher was our grammar school principal. Our physics teacher was our high school principal. Now, probably in a situation like this, where there are unions and those kinds of considerations, that isn't going to work. But I do wonder, is a vice president, a principal necessary? Is an assistant superintendent necessary? I looked at how are our schools rated compared to others in the state? And I find that Milton Public Schools are rated 34. So when I see the Milton Public Schools at 34, when a town like Westford is in the top 10, I begin to wonder, is the administration as good as the administration that we're paying for? And I guess I would say, I don't think so. Now, when I look at non-teaching positions, there are a lot of positions that, you know, truly are, let's say, working positions. I assume everybody's working, but I'm not sure that we're getting a result. So maybe it's not necessarily, you know, work that needs to be done. But there are people in here that I think are essential, like librarians, like nurses, like cafeteria workers, like custodians. But there are others that, you know, I kind of wonder about. And I kind of wonder, do we need as many people as we have on the staff? So my point is, the point I want to make is, that I believe that more digging should be done into the school budget, as it represents about half of the total town budget, to see whether we really need all of the bureaucracy, let's say, that we have. And if we couldn't put more people in the classroom, allow students to participate in sports without fees, transport students without fees, and see if we can't get better than 34, number 34 on the list. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Joe Henning.
Sure.
Is there anyone else this evening for citizen speak? If we see none, we'll go on to our next item, which is number five, and that's a meeting with Caleb Farwell, an Eagle Scout candidate, who's here to talk to us a little further about his project involving the Jewish War Memorial. Good evening, Caleb.
Thank you, Caleb.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as an Eagle Scout candidate from Troop 5 Milton, I want to thank the members of the Board of Selectmen and the previous Town Administrator, Emery Fagan, for approving me being the beneficiaries for my Boy's Guard Eagle project last October. My project improved the Jewish War Veteran Memorial at the intersection of Blue Hills Parkway and Blue Hill Ave. And with the help of 30 volunteers, we planted four bushes, edged and mulched around the existing and new bushes. We also repainted the flagpole and replaced the flag at the site. Finally, we created a semicircle out of stone pavers in front of the memorial stone. And in the center of the stone pavers is a granite stone with an engraved Star of David. And with donations from 21 people, I was able to raise $1,740 towards the project, 539 of which was spent. And I would like to give the remaining $1,201 to the town to be used for maintenance of the Jewish War Veteran Memorial and the memorial grounds. And the funds can be used for things such as new mulch, bushes or trees if needed, as well as for replacing the flag, or anything else that might be necessary in the future. Thank you all so much for your support of my project.
Terrific project.
Wonderful job, Caleb.
Thank you.
Good job raising the money, and thank you for donating it back. It's great, wonderful.
I agree. And I haven't had a chance to drive over and see it, but the pictures really look very nice. You did a very nice job, you and your group of volunteers.
Thank you.
So thank you for donating the funds to the town. We'll be sure that the town puts it to good use to, well into the future, to keep this memorial preserved in the state that it's in now. So you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to accept the gift?
I'll make a motion to accept a donation of $1,201 in excess from Caleb Farwell to be used for the town for the future maintenance and improvement of the Jewish War Veteran Memorial.
And I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For people who are watching, it's at the intersection of Blue Hill Avenue and Blue Hills Parkway. So if anyone wants to go out and take a look at the memorial, that's where it is, and they can go see the fine work that you and your team have done. When is the Eagle Scout ceremony coming up?
We haven't, we don't have a date yet, but...
Probably this spring?
Summer time, yeah.
Summer time.
In the spring or summer.
Great.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for the donation.
Very good.
All right, it's just 7:10, so we are on to a public hearing that was noticed for 7:10 regarding Compass Kitchens. Do we have anyone from Compass Kitchens today?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Scott Johnstone.
Good evening, Mr. Johnstone. Are you the owner of the property?
I am not the owner of the property.
Can you just tell us what your connection with the property is?
I leased the building from...
So you're the owner of the business?
Of the business, yes.
Okay. Tenant the property but owner of the business?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So...
And Mr. Clark, our planning director, is going to join us at the table. Okay, we have, what we, what the board has is your application materials and the information that you submitted to the sign review committee, a memo from the sign review committee, and a brief email from the planning board relating to a number of signs. So would you like to present what your request is, Mr. Johnstone?
Yes, my request was to...
I don't have everything.
I got it.
Oh, you have it.
His request is a sign at the corner of Mechanic and Granite Ave, right on the front of the building. Beside the picture window will be Compass Kitchen, and there'll be a logo beside it. It's the Compass Rose. Second sign is on the Granite Ave side, just above the black awning that will be added above the door and the window. There'll be four gooseneck lamps added above the awning, above the wording Compass, Compass Kitchens. There'll also be a logo beside it. That is what the, the planning board and the sign review committee have accepted. The application included a sign on the roof. The sign on the roof is a, previous use of the building was a bike shop. The bike shop had a sign up there for however many years. The current bylaw does not allow roof signs, no signs above the sign band or the parapet of the roof. There is a request for that, and I'll let Johnstone go into detail why he would want that. The other thing about the lights, we only have lighting on the Granite Ave side. It's the darker of the side. It's where you would walk into the building. You really don't need it on the front, on the front of the building, because there are two pictures there somewhere that have this three, there's two lights on Granite Ave and one on Mechanic Street that light up that corner. There's two lights out on the highway, out on the expressway, that light back into the area, so you can see the building. It's white, it's low, and that's it. He has cleaned up the building from what it was before. Before, it was white with dark brown. There were trees, there were bushes. Scott's done a pretty good job cleaning it up, painting it up, and it looks pretty good.
So what I'm looking at with the picture window where the roof sign is requested is the Granite Ave side?
That's the, that would be the...
Is this picture? Yeah. No.
No, he's on the other one.
Yeah.
That's the Granite Ave side, the one with the pictures with the...
This is...
See the one with the car? Emily has a picture in her hands with the car.
Mm-hmm.
That's the window. The sign on the left is gone. The sign on the right is now the one that says Compass Kitchen with the logo.
Yeah, okay. So that is the, so this is what I'm looking at then?
Well, at the front.
Yeah.
But the front, but the entrance door is on Granite Ave.
Is on Mechanic.
Is on Granite Ave.
Is Grant, okay.
It's parallel with Granite Ave. That's not a door, that's just a window on the corner of Granite and Mechanic.
Okay.
So this is the Granite Ave side?
Yes.
Okay.
That's where the awning will be, that's where the four gooseneck lamps are over Compass Kitchen.
Okay. So they proposed roof sign is not on Granite Ave, then it's...
It's kind of on an angle facing Granite Ave.
Face of the highway.
Okay.
Mr. Johnstone, do you want to speak to your request about the roof sign?
Yes. I mean, it's been up there since I don't know how long Dave's been there, but it does pose more of a, a sign as purpose and just kind of an additional sign. As you do come down Granite Ave, I took some pictures, as you come down, there's some "Do Not Enter" signs, and the vehicles that usually parked in that area cover up the front of the, front side of the building, so you don't even, you don't get a chance to see the building or any signage until you really come right up on the building and turn sideways, because the, actually, the Granite Ave side of the building is kind of on an angle. So the sign we're talking about with the lighting isn't like directly parallel with the street, it's kind of in on an angle, so the building has a little bit of angle to it. But when you come down, even the, there's two like roofs there on that building, the low lying roof doesn't, if, you know, if that was a straight up and down facade on that building, in, you know, we could hire the, raise the signage on the front of the building would be a little bit nicer. You could see it above the cars, you could see it when you're coming down the street, you wouldn't run past it. So in that roof sign, I wasn't looking to expand it in any way from what Dave's Bike Infirmary had for years, I'm just basically going over it. It doesn't go up beyond the roof line, it stays down on the gutter line, only extends up two and a half feet by 96 inches wide. So I did take a couple of pictures of outside, kind of, because we have to, sometimes we park the vehicle in front because that's the only parking spot on the property, but you can pass that around. And I took some pictures coming down the street where we have temporary sign on the building, but when you come down, you can see where the "Do Not Enter" signs and the, like, the vehicles, those cars, are parked there almost every day, that you don't see the signage on the building on the new section. And last, this one's kind of how the old, how they used to have it, and how we were proposing to put it on the building with the new landscape. So, oh, this one might, I don't know if you have a picture of this one, too.
Is there anything else that you would like to add, or do we have any questions? Tom, any questions?
No, I got, I read the recommendation of the sign review committee, and again, we generally do not approve roof signs.
Before we get into deliberation, because I just, before we go to the public, see if there's anybody here, I just want to see if we have any questions for the...
I don't.
Okay. Do we have anyone here tonight, since this is a public hearing, do we have anyone who wants to speak to this application, either in support or in opposition? Is there anyone here tonight to discuss Compass Kitchen's sign request? We're seeing none. Is there anything else that you would like to add, Mr. Johnstone? Or we close the public hearing?
Yeah, it doesn't really oppose, it doesn't, you know, face any of the residential neighbors. And, I mean, I think it's not a lot to ask. I know, as you drive up the street, I don't have big signs like Citizens Bank or Dunk the Donuts that are illuminated, you know, because it's more of a boutique shop, and I'm trying to keep it low profile but nicely done. And I have nothing but compliments from all the neighbors every time, when we've been doing it over, they come around, all looks great. You know, I've told the neighbors what I've been looking for, and they, you know, I hope the town gives it to you, you know, given no one wants the roof sign, but it's kind of like, you know, like the roof sign, like Sleepy's or, you know, and I can't, don't want to put a big illuminated sign, I'm not asking to light that sign up, just more or less really see it coming down, but the building's kind of in an awkward position when you're driving down Granite Ave. So you kind of miss the one in the building, which will look nice, but that's really only off the ground, maybe like five feet high, so you kind of lose that with the vehicles and the signage coming down the street. You know, it looks nice in the picture when you're right up on top of the building, but to really capture the sign, or you're coming up, or the advertising part of our business, you know, the, I think the roof sign creates great value.
Is your business the type that is mainly by appointment, or does it attract a lot of traffic, just people driving by?
It doesn't, I, mainly by appointment, but it does attract, like, you know, a lot of the local people I've had. You know, I get, I don't, I'm not like the hog list or the restaurant. I mean, I have, you know, a few people come in a week, like, "Oh, I didn't even know you were here," and then I saw the sign, or, you know, we have temporary, the signs up, and they've been like, "Oh, so glad you're here." So it's been kind of attracting people, and I did have that temporary scientist that's now open with, that we ramped the whole sign with. So it definitely does help to attract more business. But we're not, we're not creating a traffic problem.
And, Mr. Clark, we're not expecting anyone from the sign review committee tonight, are we?
No.
Okay. Was there any discussion at the sign review committee about, was this discussion mainly about whether the bylaws allow a roof sign, or was there just any discussion of the need for a roof sign?
Yeah, because, because our bylaw does not allow roof signs, they just said they had to abide by what the bylaw said.
Okay. All right. If we don't have any other questions, why don't we just close the public hearing, then we can deliberate?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. Any deliberation? Tom?
No, I mean, I can, I can see the predicament here. I mean, you know, it is a low building. I am concerned, I mean, you know, we generally do not approve roof signs. I mean, we have a couple of occasions, the Sleepy's one we kind of inherited, and the only other one...
That's the only other one that I know of.
Other than Ketch's law, then it's technically a roof sign, too.
That roof sign, okay, I thought that was on the side.
That's a facade, yeah.
Big wall sign.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I just don't want to start setting a precedent.
Well, there's a lot of sign, this is, this is a small building.
It is.
Which would mean three signs on this building.
Right.
And you have, the pictures indicate, and I've driven by, you have done a nice job...
Yep.
...screwing the property up and, and improving the site.
One, this does have two, there's frontage on both streets. You've got Mechanic Street and you've got frontage on Granite Ave. So it was both the sign review committee and the planning board's opinion that, you know, two signs were warranted because of its, you know, double frontage.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, my initial inclination in reading this was to agree with the sign review committee that the roof sign is not something that I would want to see on the building. From what I understood from their memo, the existing roof sign for Dave's Bike Infirmary predated even the design review guidelines.
Yeah.
And, and we have had the discussion, the context of the Sleepy's property, where the roof sign is really kind of grandfathered in unless there's a sale of the property, and then at that point, it's no longer grandfathered in. So that, that would be, it really would be treated as a whole request for a sign. So my inclination is not to support the roof sign. You know, again, I think two signs on the building that would have the gooseneck lamps on at least one side of them. You know, and the fact that a lot of people today, if the business is mainly by appointment, and a lot of people are looking, I mean, sometimes the sign is here for directional purposes, if it's a difficult area to find something, but today, people usually just get on their phones and get the directions, and you really, finding buildings are no longer really the challenge that they used to be. So I haven't really heard anything compelling in terms of supporting this roof sign, so my inclination would be not to support the roof sign.
I do have another question. Is the, where the wall sign is on that facade, is, is that a parking lot there, or is, I mean, you're showing a car park there?
Oh, it's a, that's where the original driveway was. It was asphalt before we changed it to stone to try to make the...
Spruce it up a little bit.
Spruce it up, yeah, with the cobblestone and the stone.
Yep.
So it'll look a little bit, you know, more landscaped and finished.
But people do commonly park there?
Yes. Because there's people in the building across the way that don't have any parking, so they're either parking on the street, or they're parking forces another parking spot to be used.
Did you put a flagpole in there, too?
That was a, that's a little bed.
Right.
Yep. Yeah, the bed, the bed's original.
The bed is original.
This, this part's all, yeah, the, that part's all original to the building.
There's a lot of parking on Granite Ave right there, and I don't know about the lot that's behind, that's back there.
There's no parking, there's no parking on one spot there. And then behind the building, there's...
Well, you wouldn't park on the first spot, right outside of Mechanic, because you couldn't go around Mechanic.
Right.
So it's one dead spot, but then the rest going up to the back, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Going up to the flower shop.
Right.
Yeah, my inclination is, is, well, it's not to approve the roof sign, but, I mean, I guess I am sympathetic a little bit. You know, if, if it does prove to be a problem, that business is suffering, I guess come back and try it again, but, but at this point, I'd rather try it without the roof sign, and...
I would as well. So we do have to make findings that there's a need for exempting the signs, so in this case, the two signs, from the applicable standards. And I think you have demonstrated that, but given the fact that you face two streets and this, and it's, the building is kind of cornered into the, into the location. And that you have done a nice job improving the property, and there's not going to be any negative impact by the two signs, especially the ones with the gooseneck, gooseneck lamps, which is what we're becoming more and more popular, and we're seeing more of that in town. So I think you have met the standards, the three standards that are required.
You will be open in the evening, correct, some evenings?
Yeah, mostly, we'll close at 5:00.
Okay.
Or by appointment only.
Okay.
So we do have a draft motion that was written, that was consistent with the recommendation of the sign review committee.
So I will make a motion, whereas on April 21st, 2016, the applicant received a letter of denial for a proposed sign at 440 Granite Avenue on the basis of Section 3C3A of the Milton zoning bylaw, which limits the size of exterior signs to the square footage equal to .4 times the length of the facade, or 40 square feet, whichever is less. Section 3C3C, which limits the number of exterior signs to no more than one. Section 3C3E1, which prohibits signs located above the eve line, sign on the roof. And Section 3C5, illumination of signage in a business district must be approved by the Board of Selectmen, subject to conditions, limitations, and safeguards. And Section 3C5 of the Milton zoning bylaw states, "For approval of a sign not otherwise allowed in the chapter, the Board shall determine that (a) the applicant has reasonable need for the sign; (b) there is a reasonable basis for exempting the sign from the applicable standards; and (c) the exemption of the sign from such standards will not have a substantial detrimental effect on the community. The Board has determined that the two facade signs applied for on the southwest and north-facing exterior walls of the business, including an awning on the north-facing wall. The applicant operates a business, Compass Kitchen, at 440 Granite Avenue. The address is located in the business district. (b) The proposed sign is of a similar size to that of businesses which previously occupied this location. The building fronts two streets, Mechanic Street and Granite Ave, which gives reason for the building to have multiple signs identifying the business. And the business operates after dark by appointment, which necessitates seasonal lighting of the sign to indicate the location of the business. And (c) the proposed sign is located entirely within the business district, there would be no substantial detrimental effect on the community by allowing a lit sign, multiple signs, or a sign larger than a law by zoning. And therefore approves the request for two wall signs, one lit on the north facade, an awning on the north facade, and denies the request for a roof-mounted sign."
Second, any discussion on the motion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much. Number seven on our agenda is a conference with Andy Schmidt, who's the chair of our Airplane Noise Advisory Committee.
Hey, Andy.
Good evening, Andy.
Good evening.
So I sent you electronic copies, but I wanted to give you paper copies as well. They might be a little easier to follow along.
Did I have time?
Oh, you did, yeah. Very good. So, so as you know, it was a noisy year, 2016, and, and I wanted to walk you through just what we've seen so far, what the trend might be, and what some of the challenges are that lie ahead. So as we know, noise complaints have been rising steadily since 2012. 2016 was a, was a particularly banner, a particularly banner-like year. 38,046 noise complaints were filed for at Logan. Milton filed 21,796 of those, as we continue to be disproportionately hit with airplane, airplane traffic and airplane noise. And for sake of contrast, the, the number of noise complaints at Logan in general has risen about 20 times. The number of noise complaints that we've filed since 2012 has risen 212 times. So again, pretty, pretty dramatic increases overall. If you go to page three, you see that we've actually filed the most noise complaints of any Logan area community for the last four years. We filed 57 percent of all the noise complaints for 2016, obviously the highest percentage so, so far, as you can see on the, on the slide itself. The red portion is the, is what we have filed, the gray portion is what the other communities have filed. And, and what we saw was... And what we saw was that we, this was almost more than a three, three times increase than over the previous year and so on. And we filed more noise complaints in the first eight months of 2016 than Massport received in all of 2014. Now, as we know, the volumes, the traffic changes over the course of the year. And a lot of people have noticed that the last month or so has been pretty quiet. Tonight's fairly noisy because of the weather, but overall, it's been fairly quiet. And as you can see, our percentage of noise complaints that we file varies dramatically on a month-by-month basis. In December, we only filed 30% of the noise complaints, whereas in April and September, we filed 75% and 76% respectively. The line that goes across the middle of it is the average that we had for the year. And so there are, while we do have peaks and valleys, some of the months where we are filing the highest percentage of complaints are actually some of the months where it's also the most traffic. So there is a bit of a dynamic where, when traffic increases, we see a disproportionate amount of that, and that drives the noise complaint volumes accordingly. And what's frustrating, I think, for a number of the people in the town is where we see some of these peaks are exactly the times that people want to be outside, want to have their windows open, want to be able to enjoy their homes here in Milton, despite the fact that we're as close to the airport as we are. Now, what we also saw, and I sent you an updated version of this, I corrected the graph but not the text. What I did was, and what we've done consistently across the year, is chart our noise complaints against the, against the noise complaints of the next nine most effective towns. So you see the top 10 in terms of noise complaints overall. Over the course of the year, we were, on average, filed as many as the next seven, which is why it'll say seven up on the screen. But the, but the, what, by the end of the year, we actually got to the point where we were filing more than the next nine combined. So of the, of the top, of the top 10, we are, we are number one by a significant amount, and the other nine don't even, don't even catch up to the volumes that we've been filing. Now, the, what's also interesting is when you look at us compared to our neighbors, we filed 19 times as many noise complaints as our neighbors since 2012. You can see Weymouth is the closest with 812 noise complaints since 2012. We filed more than that in one month over the, over the course of the summer, actually multiples of that over the course of the summer. And as you can see, Brent Tree and Matapan, 23 and nine noise complaints over the period as well. Now, we, there's been, there's been a lot of talk about the number of noise complaints and whether or not that's a fair metric. Massport, obviously, has had something to say about that. But when you look at the number of callers, we see a similar story. So this takes a look at, again, the top 10 cities and towns in terms of number of callers. And again, we are number one, 466 callers of a population of about 27,000 people. And while, while, while this, this number stands out on its own, what's important to point out is that, is that many of the cities and towns that are represented here are many times larger than Milton is. So Milton files one complaint for every 58 people in the town, Hall one for every 47 people in the town, versus, versus towns like Medford, one for every 323, or even average, one for every 838. So when you're looking at impact, when you're looking at annoyance, the, excuse me, the total number of complaints is one thing, the number of people filing complaints is another. And I think this shows that regardless of the measure that you're looking to use, we are disproportionately impacted compared to some of our peers. So now, that, that encompasses all the data that we want to share right now. But as we look ahead to 2017, we know that the volumes are going to increase. Flight volumes and passenger volumes have been increasing for years. Massport set a record last year for the number of people that they, that they brought into Logan. And this is, this is an issue that we're going to need to continue to fight, whether it's through the MCAC or through other avenues, to make sure that our, our portion of airplane traffic and our proportion of airplane noise is proportionate and fair, given where we sit, but also where the other cities and towns and the Commonwealth sit.
Very good information and good points. We should probably announce that, for anybody watching, I think a lot of the people who really follow the airplane noise issue closely already know about this, but the Massport RNF study is going, here, the public meeting is going to be on Wednesday, February 22nd, at 6:00 in the evening at the Transportation Building, Ten Park Plaza. And that's, that's the first public meeting relating to this MOU that the FAA and Massport signed in September. So that's going to be a very interesting meeting. And I think it's supposed to be a way to submit public questions or comments in advance. And we don't have that information yet, but if we do, our next meeting is the night before the 21st, and we'll put it out. But we'll try to get it out, if we get any information, we'll try to get that out through social media or on the town's website, just to let people know how they can submit comments if they can't attend.
Great.
So, any questions, comments?
No.
Thank you very much, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you to you and the committee for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
Please, give our, give our thanks to the committee.
Most definitely.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
All right. We are on to number eight, which is a discussion regarding Wentworth Farm, Ford Ranch Road, and a request for key waivers. We have Attorney Marion McGentrich representing the developer.
Hi.
Good evening, Marion.
Good to see you. He's nice. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Mr. Collins, would you like to join us also?
I would, thank you.
Thank you.
So I think both of you came in after we started. David Burns, unfortunately, is out sick tonight, so we have two of us tonight. So thank you for coming in. This is a subject that has been going on for a long time.
Quite a while, yes.
And a lot of, a lot of history to this project. Why don't let Marion get started, and then maybe we'll, would you like to present the request to us?
Sure. Well, the reason, reason we're here, and the reason we've been talking probably for nine months or so off and on about this, is that this is a project that the owner originally began developing the property in 2005, and explored various alternatives, and finally thought, with the help of a couple of local people, including a developer and a engineer from Milton, that he had the right project, which was a three-lot, open space development. But the development involved the use of a private right-of-way off West Side Street. There were neighbors who also had the right to use it. And instead of it being just the right project at that time, it met with a lot of opposition. It was a small, low-impact project, but the, you know, private ways are difficult because, especially if the land's been undeveloped for a long time, everybody gets used to it being open space. So after, you know, a long, almost year-long hearing process, Planning Board denied that application. There was an appeal, there was a subsequent single-lot A&R application, which the Planning Board did approve, but that was also appealed, and that appeal was resolved two years later after going to the Massachusetts Appeals Court, successfully resolved in favor of the Planning Board decision. But that means that a number of years elapsed in which these options were explored. The owner spent money, full money, development money, with engineers and attorneys and Wetlands consultants, meanwhile paying taxes on the property, and didn't have a development proposal. So the only option that he saw at that time was higher-density development, and, which would have been some kind of conjugal development, because that type of development, he felt, would support the cost of putting a road in from a different direction. But the different direction is a road from Ford Ranch Road, that's a wetland area, and requires a bridge, because there's a small stream there, and the road soaks up to the sort of upland, flat area where you could place structures. The neighborhood was very much opposed to any proposal that wasn't for single-family houses. So we were pretty much at a deadlock and a very difficult point in 2014, 2015, until the owner, developer, and the developer, and the neighborhood said, "Let's sit down again and start over. Let's see if we can come up with something that we can all support." And I didn't sit, I didn't participate in those negotiations. Those were strictly between the parties, the immediate parties. And I think they were, it took quite a while. There were people with some expert background. Webster Collins was involved in that, and I'd like to ask him to speak a little bit. I'm just going to summarize for you. But the neighborhood did manage to reach an agreement with the developer on a 10-lot proposal. This was, you know, thought to be enough to manage to pay for those additional costs of access, to provide the developer with some assurance that he would be able to make a profit. At the same time, it was thought to be small enough, and because it was single-family, it was felt to be the right kind of development for this area. This Hillside Street area, which is the Scotswoods Historic District, is a very, very unique and unusual part of Milton. It's still, despite the fact that it supports very expensive and real estate and some beautiful homes, it still has some of the feeling of the old Milton farming community that we once were. And even parts of the Blue Hills were once part of that farming community. So this is a little piece of Milton that people would like to see at least have the flavor of what it once was, to continue. And so, you know, after a tremendous amount of effort, we have a proposal, but it has cost a lot more money to get to this point than it normally would have. And I also think that it's, I think the effort of the neighborhood and the developer is unusually, it's unusual and it deserves some kind of recognition. So for both of those reasons, I would like to see, I would like to ask the Board of Selectmen to provide some fee relief for this project. And to do, you can do that through DPW fees and through Building Department fees. And I, you know, I, there, the fact that the development had to turn to a more difficult form of access to reach this agreement is probably the fundamental reason I think fee relief is appropriate. It's a difficult site, but all sites have difficulties. But the fact that the agreement that satisfied everybody was one that was going to cost more, would be more difficult, is a reason why I think fee relief would be justified here, as it might not be for every project. And finally, you know, in my letter, what I also said to you is that there's no net impact to the town here. Because if this development succeeds and is finished, you're going to see a very substantial increase in property values here. You're going to get the money back. If it doesn't go forward, there's going to be continuing controversy about what to do. The impact on the neighborhood has been terrible. It's really been tough on the owner, it's been very tough on the developer, and I'm frankly very tired of it myself. I'd really like to see this go forward as it's been proposed. I think it's the right development at this point. And so, there isn't going to be a net downside, it's never hurt the town financially, because it will help promote the completion of the project. And the project will promise, will provide increased property, very substantially increased property taxes, we think, from $17,000 a year to about $200,000 a year. So that's my summary. And if you don't mind, I'd like to invite Webb Collins to add whatever he could to that.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief and just summarize Marion's excellent effort. What she didn't mention that makes this so unique is that there were blocking forces that were in the way, that had to be removed for this to happen. There was an extraordinarily controversial parcel of land that was part of this. That's why it's only 10, 12 acres now, not 15 acres. We had to take that, the litigation surrounding that land, off the table. And the only way to do it was, people just had to step forward and pay substantial sums of money, with no benefit to themselves personally, to do it. And that unlocked the key. Once that was unlocked, then this could go forward. I sat before this board in October, excuse me, September of 2005, and made a promise, you might remember that, that it will be done. And that promise was kept with the closing on December 15th. The issue of costs, it's worthwhile diverting a little bit, because it's so important right now. With the basic economics of Boston growing and expanding at the rate that they have, construction costs have gone up at a compounded rate of over 20% per year for the last two and one-half years. In effect, the costs that the developer is facing are far higher today than when we reached the settlement fundamentally around this table in September of 2015. And the net result is, when all of a sudden there's a surprise of $80,000 or $100,000 that comes on the end, it just boxes everything up to a fare thee well. And so, it's a reason that I wanted to speak tonight, to strongly support Marion and the developer's proposal on this, and to put forth my belief that this is truly in the best interests of the town of Milton and the community overall.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. And the $80,000 to $100,000 you just referenced, just so we're fully transparent and everybody who's watching knows what we're talking about, that's the amount that the Planning Board has indicated to you, to Marion and her client, that they would be looking to put into, to have the developer pay into the Affordable Housing Trust in lieu of building an affordable unit at the, at the property.
Correct. And, you know, this was a new bylaw we passed in 2014. We added the Affordable Housing requirement, which is a good thing. The town needs to make progress there. But we didn't know how it would be applied, and we didn't know, we still don't know. We haven't yet submitted our application, whether our waivers and modifications will be accepted. We certainly hope they will. We do need some for this project. But that was the most difficult one, and there's been a lot of discussion about it. And it was an amount that we didn't take into account in our negotiations.
Marion, I don't know what the, what the building, what the fees would be in terms of building and DPW on this project, but did you have any mind in terms of how...
Well, the estimate, the estimated fees over which you have some control are $17,000 in DPW fees. There are a lot of deposits, but you get those back.
Yeah.
But the net fees are $17,000. For Building Department fees, you have to estimate that with the house, the value that we estimate this project will be building will be perhaps $8,500 per house.
Mm-hmm.
If you were to waive the entire, you know, up to $8,500 per house, you'd be waiving fees of up to $80,000, $85,000. So, but in any case...
So about $102,000 altogether.
I mean, you can do it in increments, but we looked at those fees as the only means that you would have to waive fees. I don't believe you have control over anything else. If a building, a house were built that weren't subject to $8,500 of building fees, then it wouldn't get, you know, the full $8,500. You're not going to get a credit back. You're going to get a credit towards what you would pay if you, so if you, so you need to ask, if you have more questions, those are the fees. If you feel that it would be appropriate in some other form, or there are other fees...
And could you, Marion, could you just tell us where you're, you have not yet filed with the Planning Board, but you have gone through the Conservation Commission process, and you, that has been completed?
We have received, we have received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, and it was filed in December 15. It has not been appealed. It's very, very important, because they did change a few small lines, and for every wetland area that we're impacting, and for the bridge, the project has to provide mitigation, it has to provide extra drainage areas, it has to replace trees at a three-to-one ratio. These are some of the expenses that are associated with accessing a project through a wetland, which you don't like to do if you can avoid it. So there are additional costs that have to be borne by this project right up front.
Tom, I had a proposal I was going to put forward and see whether we might want to consider. It looked to me that the DPW fee was $27,500, and that the per-lot building permit fee, as Marion indicated, is estimated to be $8,500. If we were to waive the DPW fee and give $5,000 credit to each of the 10 homes, that would bring us to $77,500, which I think is a, is a reasonable amount, given all of the circumstances here. And I think it's important that we really distinguish that this situation, just like the Hendry situation that we just reached an agreement on with that developer, these are very unique circumstances, and we're not expecting to see developers coming in looking for permit fee waivers. This is not something that I'm going to be, or and I doubt any of the members of the Board are going to be looking at waiving. This, this property really has such a lengthy history. This should have been three houses, we all know, three houses should have been built years ago and on the site, and this is a case of be careful what you ask for. And immediate abutters to the site raised a lot of concerns, but the wider neighborhood really wasn't involved in that discussion. And they have been in recent years. And I think it's worth noting that at different times over the last three or four years, members of this Board have, at different times, it's kind of gone through various cheers at different... various chairs at different times, have, all of us have really encouraged the developer and the neighborhood to get together and try to work out something that would be a good result for the neighborhood and the town. And this is a historic district, and this is a very unique area of Milton, just like the next one coming up on our agenda is on Upper Canton Ave. These are semi-rural areas, and they add a lot to the quality of life of the town, and I think that's an important consideration. So, you know, there's that old expression, sometimes where you sit determines where you stand. I understand where the Planning Board's coming from, they're looking to put money into the Affordable Housing Trust, this is the first application under their Cluster Development bylaw, and they're looking at setting a precedent. But I think for us, we've, we've been a little bit more involved in what the history has been here, even though there was a proceeding for the Planning Board, so a prior Planning Board, members of the Planning Board, previous members are very familiar with it and actually acted on it. At various times, you know, different members of this Board have really encouraged the parties to get together. And we filed a letter of support over a year ago, as Mr. Collins said, there was a meeting in this room, we filed a letter of support with the Planning Board in support of the ten-house development. And if this will get this project done, and put the property on the tax roll, and bring in the two hundred thousand dollars a year in property revenue, I think a waiver of one-time fees is something that I would be, you know, not enthusiastic about, but, but willing to do in this case, in order to support the efforts of everybody involved here to get it done.
Yeah, and I agree, I think it is the right thing to do. You know, this has been a, a long road that the developer's been down, and the neighborhood's been down, you know, given the fact that the longer it sits, the, the less revenue the town gets. And it's a project that has, you know, substantial support from, from the community, I think it will be the right name for the community. The only, rather than having an odd, why can't we just say, you know, up to eighty grand?
Then we've got to figure out how we're going to calculate it, I mean, we could, but-
You're just, it's eight thousand dollars per, per house lot.
Rather than waiving the DPW fee?
Just, just up to eight grand, whatever the fee may be, up to eight grand per house lot.
Yeah, if I could just make one correction, DPW fees are seventeen thousand dollars. The twenty-seven thousand includes refundable deposits.
Deposits annually, yeah.
So you, if you need to meet what you propose, you would need to do six thousand dollars per lot and seventeen thousand dollars of DPW fees, or you can do it in some other assortment of, or as you would propose.
Just, yeah, wherever, wherever it happens to come from, up to eight grand per-
Okay, sure. All right, I'm glad you clarified that, Marion, because that wasn't clear from the calculation we had, that there was a refundable deposit, so that's good to know.
So that would be my motion.
Can you state that again, just so I-
Up to eight, regardless of the source of the one-time fees, whether it's DPW or, or building permit fees, up to eight thousand dollars per house lot.
Okay, that's-
Not to exceed eight thousand per house lot, eight thousand in total.
I'd find that acceptable, to do eight, all right, so do you want to make that motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. Any further discussion, or anything else that you would like to add?
No, but that leaves up to you, the administration, what the, what the way of putting it together would be.
I think maybe what we should do too is ask the town administrator then to, you know, work on the calculation and how that might get split.
Sure.
And work with the DPW and the, and the Building Department on that.
You can just do a pro rata split if you want, or-
Certainly, okay. Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
I, unanimous, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Very much.
And thank you for the very detailed memo that you gave us. Mr. Collins, thank you very much.
Your most welcome.
Right, number nine on our agenda, I believe is an informational presentation, this is relating to the Carberry Estate and Northland Residential's proposal, and we, I understand we have Mr., Attorney Corcoran, and we have Attorney Chakello representing one of the abutters, and we have Mr. Dolly. There may be others who are here for that, it's, it's not a public hearing, but if there is anyone who would like to speak, it's not quite eight o'clock yet, so we, we're earlier than we may have thought we would have been, so we'll certainly allow people to make comments if they would like to. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you all just identify yourselves for the record?
Anthony Chakello, I'm an attorney, and I represent Jack Weeks, who's one of the abutters on, on Carberry Lane, at the bottom of Carberry Lane. And we've been working, Jack and I have been working with Mr. Dolly and Mr. Corcoran for a number of months on a variety of aspects of this project.
I'm Ned Corcoran, I'm also an attorney, and I'm representing Jack Dolly and his firm, which is Northland Residential Corporation, based in now Concord, formerly in Burlington. They are the entity that owns the approximately nineteen acres of the Carberry property, they took title late last year, and have an option to acquire the remaining twenty-seven acres, a total of forty-seven acres on the, on the property. And so I'm joined by Mr. Dolly, and we have been through close to a year of pretty substantive and intensive conversation, negotiation with the neighborhood, with the Planning Board, and with others about the appropriate level of development for this property. You may recall, Jack is, is developing the Woodmere site, which is the old St. Pius property on Brushhill Road, and then was fortunate enough to get the Carberry property under agreement, and then to acquire a portion of that. We started with a plan about a year ago for seventy-five units to be developed on the site. There would be townhouses, a different architectural style than what you see currently at Woodmere, but similar, you know, age-restricted, fifty-five and over townhouse development. Through a series of, of plan adjustments, we reduced that, Jack reduced that to sixty-four units. And then more recently, we've developed a plan which you have in front of you, which provides for fifty-eight market-rate units to be developed on the site. It would restore and retain at least the manor house, which is the large house visible from Canton Avenue, with the driveway that comes up close to the, to the Carberry Lane side of the property, the northeasterly side of the property, and the Walcott mansion, which is, which was inhabited by Governor Walcott, built in the late, late nineteenth century. There's also discussion around whether or not to retain the other house that's visible from Canton Avenue. It's not historic, but there's a character to it, resonance to it, that the neighborhood is comfortable with, and I think the Planning Board favors preserving that, although the Historical Commission has not expressed a similar desire. So that's a, that remains a question. This plan is at fifty-eight units, because we have, at the request of some neighbors, met with the, and met with the, the Town's Affordable Housing Trust, Tom being a member, met with them to, to see whether or not it's feasible to develop the six affordable units, which would be required if it's a ten percent affordable requirement. Develop those elsewhere in town, or make some payment in lieu of the provision of those units. There's a strong preference to provide units in the same, in the same timeframe as the development undertakes. So for every ten units that would be developed, we'd need a certificate of occupancy on, in affordable unit. And we've, we're working hard at identifying properties. We've been working with Mike, Jim McCullough, and others in the town, sort of identify distressed properties, one-offs where they're, they're either uninhabited but underwater, water from a mortgage perspective and otherwise, to see if it's possible to acquire them, renovate them, and then sell them as deed-restricted affordables and available, not for over fifty-five population, but for younger, younger couples and younger families moving into town or living in town and working and renting, but have the opportunity to own. In the course of that, and because it's such a significant change to the, to the property, and that the, in that there will be, through construction and otherwise, various forms of impact, which will be encountered by the broad neighborhood, there's been a strong desire beyond drafting of zoning, which is enabling, really an enabling document, that is, it is reasonably, and as we close in on that with, with the Planning Board, the Planning Board, and we are close to a draft of a, of a bylaw, for which a public hearing will be, will take place next Thursday, the sixteenth, and that will be presented to town meeting. We are, and as I said, we're close to that, but there are details around that. Construction sequencing, construction timing, correct, construction management, management of construction impacts, identification, clear identification of, of open space, hierarchy of open space, what is allowed in certain portions of the open space and not in others. Things that, that you can't bake into the bylaw, but which are important considerations to be accounted for. And so, at Tony's request, we've looked, started to look hard at the notion of a development agreement. And if a development agreement were put in place, that would be substantially negotiated by the neighborhood representatives, by obviously the developer, input from the Planning Board, some degree of input from the Board of Selectmen, that if such an agreement were put in place, which would be the entity that would have the capacity to enforce it? The Selectmen is really the only body in town that has the power to sue and be sued on behalf of the town. And so, the notion is, borrowing from a couple of examples that we've uncovered, one being in Weston, and a, and a copy of which I've given to the Board, an agreement that was entered into between, with the developer, Board of Selectmen, as a precondition to approval of zoning. It was recorded, so its obligations ran with the land. And more recently, we've discovered one in the town of Winchester, and so I have copies of, of that, which we've just uncovered today. So, we are here, we're not the, obviously the proponents of a, of a, of a development agreement, we are willing participants in the drafting and the creation of a development agreement. Certainly Tony and his client are more of the proponent side, but we're, you know, as I said, we are willing to engage in that and arrive at an enforceable document, because it helps us build clarity to the development, from the schematic of the plan to the zoning, to the details or the, or the roadmap for the creation of certain plans. It's one thing to say that there'll be a site plan, and that there will be a three-D model, and that there will be certain types of architecture, but you can only touch sort of on a high level with respect to zoning, what that all means. You can bake into a development agreement exhibits that define the process you'll go through to arrive at, what the architecture will look like, what's important, and what variations you'll be considering, and et cetera. So baking, creating those things helps us focus on creating a set of documents for the application to the site, for the special permit, if we get the zoning, that everybody is clearly understanding, is taking us from the zoning through negotiations with the, with neighbors, so they understand what and when and how things get done, and that the town has the ability to enforce, if for some reason, things go sideways. And they can do it on behalf of, the town can do it on behalf of itself, and it can do it on behalf of neighbors. And so that's really the premise, and as I said, we're, we are willing participants in that, and so.
Thank you. As indicated, I'm the attorney for, for Jack Weeks, who's one of the neighbors. There are many neighbors involved, this is a very active neighborhood in terms of the people there. This, this property, the Carberry property, really is a jewel. It's got some of the best sort of views up into the, you know, the, into the Blue Hills Reservation and that type of, that, that are really dramatic as you drive up or down Blue Hill, or Canton Avenue. So I think that, I was going to say, there, there isn't quite unanimity about this development, but I think actually, other than Mr. Dolly, there is unanimity that everyone would love for things to stay the way they are. But frankly, I think there is unanimity on the principle that that's not going to happen. Something is going to happen there. And there are a variety of different options. I think with one exception that I'm aware of, everyone that I've talked to thinks that a two-acre subdivision up there would be a travesty. It, it really would be a disservice to, to everyone in the vicinity and the, the town. So, people have been working hard to try to come up with a development, frankly, that they can live with. We want to do better than that, substantially better than that, but in terms of the density of the property and, and that kind of thing, it's a matter of getting to what people can live with. And my client thinks we've got a plan that can be made to work, you know, in a way, if we push the developer to do the things that he's promised to do and that can be done, that would have the property be something that really still remains quite a treasure for the town. So, you know, if, if our goal is to say, what are we going to do up there, and how are we going to do it in a way that, to the extent feasible, preserves a lot of the aesthetics and minimizes the impacts to the neighborhood and to the town, how are we going to do that? Now, we all around this table have been to town meeting many, many times on development projects, and you were just here right before on a project that's, you know, been in town or, you know, for quite a period of time, a lot of discussion, a lot of effort. I think that there's only so much that you can do with a bylaw to maximize the things that the neighbors want to ensure. So, you know, there's a lot that we think can be done about aesthetics and the like, and the impacts. But I think the best way to do that is, to the extent feasible, come up with an agreement that supplements and, and adds to what the bylaw can and should do. And the key principles we need to focus on in the agreement are clarity, what are the rules of the road, what are we going to do and how are we going to do it? Accountability, the developer's made a lot of promises about what he's going to do and how he's going to do it, and he's going to get much more specific as the project goes on. Let's make sure that these things are, he's accountable for those, and that they're enforceable. And we think that although it's not been done in Milton before, a development agreement is a very good way to really push those things forward. And so that when the neighbors and town meeting members go to town meeting to vote on the bylaw, they not only have the broad principles and as much specifics as are appropriate for a bylaw, but they also have substantial more detail and substantial enforcement mechanisms that would be in a development agreement. And we think that we need the Selectmen to be involved in this process and help facilitate this process, and hold the hammer, frankly, in this process at the end of the day. The Board of Selectmen's not in the business of being the Planning Board, and nobody wants them to be. But there are times and places where the Board of Selectmen can play a very constructive role, and we think this is one of them. So I would ask you to really consider this. I think there's a lot of work to be done, I think there's a lot of people willing to pitch in and do it. You folks end up responsible with everything landing in your plate in some big or little fashion, this is one more thing that you're being asked to do, but I think it's important. And so, on behalf of my client, I would ask you to, to provide some assistance and consider jumping in here. Thank you.
I just want to report out to Tom that I have talked with a couple of members of the Planning Board, including the Chair, today, and there is some disagreement among the Planning Board as to whether they should or should not be involved in a development agreement. My initial inclination would be, as you just said, Tony, we're not planners, a lot of these areas are not things that members of this Board necessarily have a lot of familiarity with, they're things that tend to come to the Planning Board more regularly. There is some concern that the Planning Board is the entity that's writing the bylaw and would be the special permit granting authority, should they or should they not be involved in a development agreement? So there's, there's disagreement there, I think that end of it might have to be figured out with Town Council, and maybe it's the planning staff that would help this Board.
It seems to me largely that the, the agreement is, is a meeting of minds between the neighborhood and the developer.
Yes, I agree with that.
The Planning Board has its role in designing the bylaw. This goes over and above the bylaw. Yeah, I mean, I guess the Planning Board should have some kind of a voice in terms of some of their, their wants or desires, but largely, I think it has to be between these two people sitting at the table right now.
It's certainly more than that. There is a Blue Hill Neighborhood Association, some of the representatives are here.
Sure, sure.
And, and that group and, and other interested parties, I know there's a neighbor who's represented by Council- I know there's a neighbor who's represented by council, chances are, he's going to want to get word in. I think you heard from Mr. Connors already, who represents Mr. Walker, on the issue. So, there are quite a number of people that needs a way to be involved.
At the end of the day, it's going to be an agreement that Mr. Dolly is willing to sign as well.
Well, absolutely.
So, it is a negotiation, you know, it's not a one-way street. But I'm certainly more than open to it, yes.
I am as well. I think a lot of the, but I was trying to mention with the planning board, is they have a little disagreement or concern internally about their role in it, so they're looking, you know, they're looking for this to be more something that we would be involved in, rather than they would be involved in. At least, some of the members are, I think, again, there's disagreement among the planning board, but we would, I guess what would give me some comfort, and it's similar to what you said, Tom, that we'd have the developer talking with the neighbors who are the, and the abutters, who are the people most impacted, and we'd want the wider groups of the neighborhood association is involved. Is the neighborhood association, and if we have someone representing them, if you'd like to come up and speak, sir, you're certainly welcome to, because we'd want to know, would the neighborhood association be part of these discussions? And presumably, a lot of the discussions would arise out of what's going on at the planning board as the zoning laws take shape, and then probably out of some outside meetings.
My name's Ted Phillips, I'm at 28 Hemlock Drive, I am the treasurer of the Blue Hills Association.
Good evening, Mr. Phillips, thank you for coming in.
I've been at the planning board many different days, as well as Hale Smith, our president, who happens to be out of town at this time. At the planning board, we have expressed our support for a development agreement, and we have indicated our strong desire to participate in the formation of that agreement and its enforcement. And we are very interested in preserving, to the best of our ability, the positive aspects of the plan and of the proposed development. We're very concerned over the viewscapes from Canton Avenue. We're very concerned over the viewscapes of Walcott Path, which is on the side there. We've had concerns around density and whatnot, but that's a different discussion for a different day. And we've had a lot of discussions with Mr. Dolly and Mr. Carrick about things that we'd like to see, and they've agreed to do that, and so this is a form or a document where we can codify that and have something to memorialize those discussions and agree to at a later date.
Thank you very much. I have a question, either whether it was the Weston development agreement, or I think you said the other one is Winchester? And that one is also with the Winchester Selectmen?
Yes.
They were partying through it. Are you familiar, Tony, or Ned, or Jack, or anyone, with how those got negotiated? Was similar to this situation, was it a group of abutters and neighbors working with the developer? Or did a town body have any involvement in the production of it, in the substance of the agreement? I know they signed it, but any discussion?
Man, I am Jack Dolly. They're both different. In the case of Weston, it was a raw piece of land for which zoning didn't exist, so it is analogous to the Carberry property, in which the property was put up for sale and bought by a group, and town was effectively petitioned to allow an age-restricted land use application, again analogous to what I'm proposing on the Carberry property to occur on a piece of land. So, the development agreement, and it was in a very, very, very sensitive place in Weston, if you know Weston off Highland and Chestnut Streets, analogous, again, or very similar to Canton Ave. So, there was a neighborhood group, there was concern that, you know, what was said could be codified, good word. You know, how do, this, the development of the document that we have drafted thus far came out of conversations with Tony and Hale and Denny, Denny Swenson, excuse me, where, how do we know that you will do what you say? How do we know that the manor house lawn will be the manor house lawn, and that the number of duplexes or triplexes or the preservation and rest rehabilitation in certain buildings actually will be done? Or the buffer to this or that or the other thing will actually be done? So, we, I pulled out the Weston one, and they traveled in a parallel track to a town meeting. It gave town meeting members, open town meeting in that town, the ability to vote affirmatively on the enactment of the zoning with, if you will, the backstop, I look at Ted, to know that the plan, the unit count, the buffers, the promise of planting trees, or the promise of rehabilitating this, that, or the other thing, I don't mean to be colloquial, that will actually be followed through, and that they could be, you know, enforced. So, that was different. The Winchester property is actually a piece of property that was originally owned by the town, sold to a third-party developer who went under in the recession, and it came back to life for a completely different use, a assisted living use originally to a 29-unit active adult project with 10% affordability, and a whole bunch of other, sort of, things that needed to be codified, not to parrot all these words. And so, it ended up being a negotiation between the, if you read it all closely, the Winchester Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the Board of Selectmen to memorialize unit count, age restriction, affordability. It was, I think the property was less sensitive to a Weston or a Carberry slash Walcott, and so that although there's buffer areas baked into it, but they're 20 feet. We don't, none of us want a 20-foot sideline buffer on the Carberry property. I mean, I'm not proposing that, I never have, and I don't think the neighborhood thinks that's the right formula. So, that's a long-winded way of answering the question, was the planning board versus the selectmen involved? I think it is a document where, that everyone has to be involved, frankly, candidly. I mean, the selectmen probably, from a granularity of detail standpoint, less so than the planning board, and I, and I guess the planning board on behalf of the community, and we have maybe a bit of a fractured neighborhood opinion as to what to do on the property. It's not unanimity, or at least three camps. So, I have no, so if you're looking, the association with me is all, you know, how did you say it? Where you stand is where you, where you sit is where you stand. I think, you know, most of the substantive detail that I've seen in both of these agreements are all substantive details that I think are relevant, that are spot-on, and that can be crafted to my satisfaction, and I believe to the neighborhood's satisfaction.
I would just add that I think the planning board, while they're not interested in negotiating, I think certainly we would want them to review it, because if there's something in it that violates their understanding of what the zoning is going to actually allow, they at least have to have some level of comment on it, but I know that there was a real.
Okay, well, that's helpful information. We can follow up with the planning board and with town council on that. This is just an unusual circumstance to have a development agreement.
I think we don't have any experience doing it, so everybody's a little uncertain as to how it should play out. I mean, you have a bylaw that has a certain generality, and we're used to going from there to, you know, the permitting process. This is, in some ways, an interim, slightly different step, more enforceability and certainty in some respects. But the things that we lock into the agreement, as Ned said, need to be consistent with what's in the bylaw, and also where the planning board thinks they need to end up in a special permit. Because we don't want to do things that are going to have to be, you know, sort of, that are impediments to getting to, you know, the project done at the end of the day, if that's what we want.
I mean, I think in the end, people, if I am standing in front of whomever saying, this is what I'm proposing, they want to know that when I apply for a special permit, that this is what I applied for. I don't apply for that. And I can say it till I'm blue in the face, but what's it mean?
Well, that information is helpful. I think our board just wants to be mindful and respectful of the role of the planning board here. They're another elected board, and these sorts of projects are really more in the nature of what their role is than what our role is. But certainly, the Board of Selectmen has a role in a very, this for Milton is a very large development. For City of Boston, this would not be a big development at all, but for Milton, this is a substantial development, and it's, and as someone said earlier, this is a very unique area of town. I think it was Marion McEttrick in the prior agenda item, talking about Scotts Woods, but the same argument could be made in this area, it's a semi-rural area, there's a lot of history in the area. Luckily, the Eustace Estate was preserved, we're going to have a museum opening up in that area. But we want to preserve the vistas, we want to preserve the streetscape, and so it sounds, Tom, like you and I would be willing to entertain this and do what we can to help, but we'll just have to, probably have some follow-up conversation to figure out what the best way to go about this is.
I do have a question, and it really does have as much to do with the grade, just a little curiosity. So, you're proposing an over-55 community.
Fifty-five and over.
Fifty-five and over, yeah. Number one, what does that do to the marketability and profitability of the development? And was that the will of the abutters to have it over 55?
They wanted, among other things, they want assurances that traffic impacts associated with.
Are minimal.
Are minimal. And one of the documents that we've produced today is a traffic analysis, where we conducted traffic counts at Home Inc., Quisset Brook, and two of Jack's developments in Belmont. Came up with an average of, and they're all similarly situated, Quisset Brook is not age-restricted, but they're on children.
Which is typical for those.
Which is typical for those types of developments, I mean.
I mean, the only thing, the only reason I even ask the question is, in terms of, you know, if I am, if my sense is correct, that marketability and profitability of old 55 is less than not age-restricted. And if that is the case, could a case be made to make it a little less dense if it were not age-restricted?
I guess, so I'm the practitioner out of everyone at the table. I've probably done, 90% of what I've done has been age-targeted by design, so.
Correct, like you are.
Yeah, whether it's age-restricted or it's first-world master, it's sort of, you know, you gravitate, you know, the population gravitates toward that. You know, the baby boomer generation and demographics work to that thing. I don't have any concerns about the marketability. Sure, can I sell a four- or five-bedroom, 4,500 square foot, three-car garage on a two-acre lot of land for a million eight?
But no, that wasn't what I was getting at. I'm still getting at it, I have a townhouse kind of development, but just not age-restricted, and what is that?
My understanding, at least all of the time I spent with Jack, is that the average age of the buyer of the age-targeted by design is over 55.
Right.
I understand.
I mean, I'd love it not to be age-restricted, because from a financing standpoint, there's a little less stickiness to it, but I have no, I have no problem.
So, I guess what you're saying is it's kind of minimal, the difference?
It's not a risk, well, it's a risk that I'm willing to take. You know, so the issue, when you read through some of all this, and I don't suggest you do so, you get into on the affordability, so the affordable units be age-restricted or non-age-restricted? And there's two schools of thought. And one school of thought says that if you're age-restricted, you're discriminating against young families or non-age, you know, non-55 and older folks. And then there's another rule that has actually come down through the courts that says that you can't age-restrict because they are a protected class in and of their own money. I'm, I will tell you, from a political or moral or social perspective, I think that the affordable units should have a broader appeal or market approach. That's just my, that's me speaking, Blue.
Yeah, I tend to agree, more the workforce kind of.
Yeah, I'd rather help someone who's coming up. But, you know, there are folks that are on the other end of that spectrum, they need help just as much as they do, so it's.
I think that was, Tom, that was sort of the consensus of the affordable housing trust trustees.
Yes, it was.
That that was more of the goal of the town, was to provide more affordability for younger. We've got a lot of affordability for older.
Absolutely.
The notion of age-restricted in most of these things is, at a high-value price point, you're going to have a population that is going to spend some period of time throughout the year somewhere else. So, the traffic impacts and the occupancy impacts is reduced, whether they go, there's snowbird or sunbird, you know, a summer bird, and they go to the lake, or they go to the cape, or wherever they go. That, and it's real. I mean, you know, the communities that have done, it's not unprecedented to see 25%, 30% vacate in the middle of the winter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, thank you all. Anything else you wanted to add, or we have a few others of people who are here. Was there anyone else who wanted to come up and add anything to the discussion, or make any comments? No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We're now on to item 10, which is goals and objectives. This is for the town administrator, but in some ways, it's also for the board, really. It's kind of a joint goals and objectives, and, you know, we don't have David here tonight. I suppose we could maybe have a brief discussion and see whether he has anything further he wants to add, or... And the idea would be that we're only talking the fiscal year, so until June 30th, and then every fiscal year, there would be a discussion between the board and the town administrator, what are the goals and objectives, what do we all really want to accomplish during the next 12 months? So, we're looking at a short period of time.
Well, the short period of time, I guess, is kind of easy, let's get an offering budget.
Budget on my list, too.
I mean, that's first and foremost, and with only a few months left, I'm not sure how much else you're going to get. You know, the one project, I think, that Mike has already come up with, the LED is kind of a no-brainer to kind of see that thing through, makes a lot of sense. You have to pay some upfront money, but the payback is less than five years, if the numbers are correct. So, it kind of makes sense. I don't know how much else you can accomplish in a few months, but.
Well, I agree with you about the budget, that was first and foremost on my list. And obviously, we're coming into town meeting, so just the whole warrant and the town meeting and getting through town meeting, which, you know, is a lot of work, putting all the articles and kind of overseeing and making sure that, we've got new people on the warrant committee, we've got a lot of, a lot of turnover in recent times, so just getting, overseeing the warrant and making sure that we've got everything for town meeting. The only other things I had on my list were, we talked about the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, Brad, and I know you're already, Mike, you're already working with the Coalition, or will be working with them on that, if you haven't already. And that's something that's got a deadline coming up, it has to be filed within the next few months. So, that's something I think we'd want, at least I would want to make a priority, if you would agree with that, Tom.
I do agree with that, yes.
And then the Henry's demolition.
Yes, absolutely.
Next step is the.
That can't happen soon enough.
That's right. The next step is the Conservation Commission, and hopefully, we're going to get that on the February.
They are on the agenda.
Are they on the agenda?
They're on the agenda.
Oh, that's great. So, February 14th, we have another Concom's meeting on February 14th. So, we'll have, so Henry's will be on the agenda that night, that's good news. So, depending on how quickly it moves at that level, getting the demolition done, but also just the public meeting, because there's going to be a lot of information we're going to have to disseminate to the public, especially the immediate abutters and the businesses, the neighborhood, about how that's going to work. So, we talked about having a public meeting, we had a public meeting in August, we talked about having another one as we got closer to the demolition, so I think that's something that we'd probably want to make one of our goals as well.
Yeah, because I'm sure the public has a lot of questions in terms of the demolition, how it's going to occur, and the safeguards.
Yeah, there's already been some questions from a town meeting member, Creasing Two, who's representing or has said he's providing a lot of information to town meeting members and residents in that area. So, I think, I would put those on the list.
The only other things I have, number one is, and we've already started the groundwork a little bit, is my debt service, the article, the home loan petition we have hanging out there that stalled a bit of the stabilization fund idea. And then, the only other thing I can really think of, and it's more long-range than it is, but I think it's time to start. There's two huge capital projects before us, fire stations, and we really haven't, as a board, we haven't paid a ton of attention to them, and we know they're out there, and we listened a little bit. But I think it's time to start collectively getting involved and start thinking about how to move that forward, when to move it forward.
Well, there is a warrant out of the, let's go into town meeting.
Yes, I know that, for a building committee, yes. Except for a building committee, yes.
I think the only thing I'd add is, in my two months here, I've witnessed the lack of revenue coming into the town, right? We talked to a lot of developers here, or listened to a lot of developers here tonight coming up with ideas as to, you know, how to get some of these projects through the system and the tax revenue that comes with it. So that's something that's of concern for me. I also understand what Milton is, what it's always been in its place in history, and you don't want to move the needle too much.
Yeah, but we're largely built out, and what isn't built out is a lot of resistance to having it built, and understandably so.
Right.
So, yeah, I think in terms of growth in Milton, a lot of it is redevelopment at some point in time of neighborhoods that are, you know, aging out significantly and taking a place to...
Redevelop.
Yeah, kind of redevelop, you know, get them more valuable.
Yeah. And then resounding in my head over the past two months is community building, right? We need to take care of our elderly community. They built this town. They've made this town as attractive as it is for everyone this day. I think then we need to, we need to take care of our children, make sure they have opportunities. Madam Chair mentioned the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition.
Yep.
I think the work that the Parks Commissioners and Dave Perdius, Paul Tomano, and Juan de Vordu to try to make some activities for our youth, I think that needs to be, needs to be put into a new gear. All the work that the playground planners are doing, they've garnered a lot of support restoring the four playgrounds in our town. I will mention the new Council on Aging pamphlet came out today, and it was established in 1980 to respond to the needs of community elders and enhance their quality of life. We need to continue to keep that in mind as we work through, I mean, a very tough budget season. We need to look at it when we look at infrastructure in the town, how are we gonna spend our dollars wisely to improve the roads? Obviously, there are more cars on the road when you have more families on the road. There are buses on the road, but just things like that, and just built around community building for all age groups in the town. People that made the town what it is and the people that will inherit the town. The library, right? That's a gem right across the street here. We need to make sure that it sees the proper resources and gets, get what it needs. Obviously, I'm a fan of the Public Works Group, and that yard down there on Randolph Ave is antiquated.
It is.
It is. And the only thing, probably more antiquated, are the firehouses in the town. So to Tom's point, we know about it, we're talking about it, we now, we have to, we have to figure out...
Start to plan, yeah, yes.
The plan to, I mean, the schools are getting to be about 10 years old, I think.
Some older, yeah.
Yeah, so we can get some of this work in the pipeline now. It won't happen to be when our schools are 20 years old, right? We'll catch up to ourselves eventually if we don't get this in the pipeline. Along those lines, just infrastructure and community building with most of the things we do in the town. Obviously, the public safety aspect, what Chief King does with his community policing, it goes a long way nowadays, and just trying to find more activities for kids after school, you know, support the youth programs throughout the town.
Yeah, we really have kind of, I mean, this town certainly had a lot more youth activities 40 and 50 years ago than it does now. Just because of budget constraints and everything else, a lot of them just kind of gone by the wayside. And they really are important. I mean, a large reason why you do get youth crime is they're bored, frankly.
Some of those, I think, the longer-term goes a bit.
They are, yeah, yes.
The more immediate ones, I think, for purposes anyway, for the budget, yeah, the Henry's demolition, just getting the town meeting and the warrant, and the coalition's grants. The only other one I had on my list was just about communication, and this kind of broad topic, but it goes to what we talked about a lot during, it was before your time, Mike, while we were going through the search of the town administrator. In the change from the role of the town administrators, we, you know, I think one of your questions when we were going through interviews with the town administrator, Tom, was now that we're, more workers on the town administrator, it's gone from the board, which is a public meeting televised, everybody sees what's happening, and the town administrator making some of the decisions, which the question kind of becomes communication between the town administrator, the board, and then out to the town. And we have to come to a way that kind of everybody, it works for everybody, you know, that it's satisfied that we've got the right, we've struck the right balance. And, you know, one, one means of that might be, and it's just one means, and we need to figure out what works, but one would be, to cut down on phone calls, would be a memo from the town administrator just as to, you know, what are the, what's going on? Has somebody been promoted to the police department? Is somebody hired at town hall, or is some new contract signed? That sort of thing. And then can we make that public? Obviously, if there's anything sensitive or employee-related or executive session, that wouldn't go into it, but we put that up on the town website.
Yeah.
If some communities do, we put that above that at the MMA, and I think we might want to, I'd like to see us move in that direction because I think it would, I think it would help the board and help the public, but also cut down on some of the phone calls the town administrator has to make to different members of the board.
Right. I mean, technology-wise, we're so far behind the times, even with some of the smaller, smaller communities have. But we looked at one of them, which was the...
Exella?
Yeah, the meeting...
Meeting Minutes and Agendas?
Agendas. But that site even goes beyond that. It can be a repository for not only agenda items, but, you know, but for just disseminating information for the board, you know, board packages, and to keep us up to date on things. And there's ways to let that, you know, let the press and the public have access to certain areas of that. I mean, if you think those things through, that could be, and I keep saying, you know, what drives me crazy and, you know, because of what I do, too, and I just get hundreds of emails a day. So the more emails I get, the more I'm going, ah, no more emails! I can't stand it! I don't, I could spend my entire day just logging emails in various places and get nothing else done. So, you know, a repository for them that wasn't emails would be just so nice.
That's been one of Tom's pet peeves for a while, yes. Yeah, there may be a way we can come to some kind of a solution for that, that is consolidating.
I'm down to cover them, so it's not much difference to me, but...
Yeah, we watched that proposal from Exella.
Yes.
Their enterprise package also involves stuff that Clerk Galvin's looking at that may be able to maintain public records for us going forward with the new legislation.
Right, right.
And they, as they mentioned to us, in that, yeah, it's based on your population, I think they explained to us that day. Milton would fit into that, you know, probably less than 30, more than 25 category.
Right.
Thousand. But it would be something that we could use on a, as a type of an umbrella package, and it speaks well to the new website design, as they mentioned in our presentation, that website provider, this, their technology speaks to it. So that's something Clerk Galvin's looking at as well.
Good.
All right, so we got some, beginning of a long-term list, and at least a few short-term ones that are important. All right, anything else?
Pretty much covered it.
All right, on to number 11. We have two boards and committee appointments, Telecom Design Review Committee.
Okay, I'll move to reappoint Kurt Fraser of 35 Norman Street to the Telecommunications Design Review Committee through February 2018.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the races, radio amateur communications, emergency systems. Do you want me to read one since you've had to do all the readings on it?
I'm fine.
All right.
I'm still amazed we have amateur radio, but...
We do.
Congratulations. So I'll move to reappoint Walter McDermott, Jr. of 95 Clapp Street, and Paul Hopkins of 87 Baker Avenue to the Radio Amateur Communication Emergency System Races to serve through February 2018.
I'll second the motion. And just note humorously that if the late Carol Blute were here, she would be very upset to hear her street pronounced anything other than Mar Avenue.
Okay.
That was a big issue for her at the Warren Committee, I remember. Okay, I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Return I see Mar Avenue, I think of Carol Blute. All right, the town administrators report.
Very quickly, got some positive news. Got a letter in the mail from Mastard Administrator Tom Tinlin that they are forming a Chapter 90 Working Group to start to revamp the way they do things. They're looking for municipal input on it, how they can do things better. It's a step in the, very, very big step in the right direction. They did specifically mention that this, this working group will not talk about changing the formula to the Chapter 90 money, but I think this, the fact that the Baker Administration is looking at Chapter 90 and revamping the way they do, some of their business is a step in the right direction. And I've responded that I'd gladly sit on that working group. They intend on meeting two or three times and have a report back to the governor in about 60 days after they put the group together, so.
Great.
Like to hear what other cities and towns are thinking about, and also talk about what we think Milton, we deserve a little more of that piece of the pie and how that money's allocated, but...
The downs to four.
Yeah, right, yeah. I'll strategically talk around it. But that was pretty nice. We did not have a chance, we were supposed to meet, first meeting with the pilot committee yesterday morning, Mr. Burns's illness. We did not take advantage of that, but we have rescheduled for next Wednesday. It is a priority for myself and Selectman Burns. I've yet to meet Jim Henderson, but, you know, I think we all know the numbers that come into the town could be a little...
Every little helps, yeah.
Yeah, every little bit helps, especially when, you know, leading into my next subject. Very robust presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair, for your comments last Wednesday at the Warren Committee. You know, it's $1,572,000 shortfall at this time at the non-contingent budget, so everybody's understandably fighting for their piece of the pie, and we have to determine, you know, we presented it to the Warren Committee, and they'll determine where the cuts fall. We made our case, and we wish things were better. We still want to keep that level of service up throughout the town, so we'll see where it goes. But very, very robust discussion last Wednesday, so I appreciate the Warren Committee's diligence with that. Just some miscellaneous stuff that we went through, just to go back to the Council on Aging. Director Mary, Mary N. Sullivan gave me a nice note from Milton resident Joyce Reynolds that was dropped off or mailed today, and I'll read it. Dear Director and staff, thank you so much for everything you are doing for me. I am so sorry I do not know all of the wonderful people's names, but you have been so great to me. I thank the wonderful driver, Joe, Joe Murn, who has helped me so much as all of you have. I feel so safe with you wonderful people. God bless Joyce Reynolds. So just another notice, just all the hard work that's going on over at the Council on Aging, I think needs to be reported. Two notices. On Saturday, March 4th, the Red Cross of Massachusetts will be in Milton to install free smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors. Spoke to Chief Grant about it. We'll try to get messages out through social media and on the website just to let people know.
Is that free to anybody that needs them?
Yes, yep. For Milton residents, so. It's March 4th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We'll post this on the town's website tomorrow morning. There's a 1-800 number to call. It's a very good opportunity for people to...
Yeah.
Maybe the Council on Aging could help publicize that to the elderly, too, just because I think they might be very likely to take advantage of that.
Yeah. And then Sunday, February 12th, I had a nice lunch with a group of religious, all-denominations over at the First Parish Milton Unitarian Universalist last week. We talked about some issues and some of the concerns. Most of the people that you had introduced me to at the interfaith...
The Corgi Association.
Yeah, Corgi Association. It was great. They're hosting a Courageous Conversations towards racial justice Sunday night at the First Parish Milton Unitarian Universalist. It's open to all, and anybody that can make it, it's from 5:00 to 8:00. Should be a very robust discussion. Lastly, Madam Chair, you were there, Congressman Lynch made an appearance in our town Friday night, opened a dialogue about some of the federal administration's new executive orders and what they might mean to some of the people, and very, very, I left about 8:30, and there were probably 60 people yet to talk, so it was a very, very, again, robust conversation going on there with them. Congressman told his points on some things and then opened the doors and questioned, so it was, I don't know what you thought about it, but I thought it was, it was almost a full house there.
Yeah, it was, that was the only thing I was gonna mention, but the chair was just to thank him for choosing Milton to host his town hall meeting, but it went for over three hours.
Wow.
He took every question, and they had to rush them a little bit at the end, but they held the building open for as long as they could, so it was, it was quite an evening. Very well attended, hundreds of people.
Yeah, there certainly are people that are anxious of some of those issues. That's good.
Okay, I have nothing else to report.
I don't either, but just what, you mentioned the Chapter 90, Mike, and could we maybe just put on an agenda item to, we've been kicking around complete streets for a while now.
Sure.
Just to kind of give the board an update, the pros, the cons of it, the, where we stand on it. I know that Joe Lynch and John Thompson have been looking into it and doing some preliminary stuff with it, but...
I think it's about $400,000 worth of money.
Out there to be had?
Yeah, yeah, four complete streets.
Yeah, so it just, you know, what are the cons of getting the 400 grand of...
Yeah, we could make that an agenda item for...
Yeah, I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, I have a history in Boston, the pros and cons of it. Obviously, in Boston, most of those streets were built on former cow pastures, so it's...
Right. Milton's not a lot different.
It's tight, it's tight. So when you open the door to pedestrian and bicycle-friendly...
Right. I think it mentioned here, though, you know, that, yeah, because I had said it before, that if we're gonna reduce our speed limit, fundamental speed limit, to 25 miles an hour, you know, the best way to enforce it is to have streets that, you know, you feel comfortable at 25 as opposed to at 30 or 35. And, you know, to the extent you restrict them a little bit, maybe isn't the worst thing in the world.
Sure. I'll ask Joe Lynch and John Thompson to join us. I know Bill Flock has been talking about it as well with them, so, yeah, be talking point for the 21st.
Okay. All right, then, any of your citizens' speaker's thoughts?
We have one.
About the school budget.
It was logic about the school budget, which is really the Warren Committee and the schools' bailiwick. I mean, I'm not one to say, you know, what's the proper level of administration. Certainly, I know enough from, you know, knowing businesses that you need some level of administration, they, you know, they can't be all Indians and no chiefs. It doesn't work. You know, what's the, what's the appropriate level? I don't know. I think, you know, we've been trying to look at more and more ways, and we do have that committee of trying to consolidate school and town administrative functions to the degree it makes sense, and I think we should continue to do that.
All right, we've covered future agenda items. Almost there was anything else? And if not, we have no executive session tonight, so we have a motion to adjourn.
So...
Well, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at 8:49.